Welcome to the May 12th regularly scheduled Midland Public School Board of Education meeting. If everyone could make sure that their cellphones are turned off before we start, I would really appreciate it. We welcome everyone tonight. We have a full house, this is fabulous. If you would all rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now do roll call.
Let's see, President Wasserman is not here. Vice President Branstad, here. Secretary Gordon, I'm here. Treasurer Kaminsky.
Here.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member McFarland.
Here.
Member Singer.
Here. So we have six out of seven. All right, next up we have our consent agenda, I'll just read through all the items. Item 2.1, his approval of the regular meeting minutes from the April 14th, 2014 meeting and the budget workshop which was held on April 28th, 2014. 2.2 is following staff members have announced their resignations. 2.3 is bids were requested and sent to seven vendors for multi-purpose copy paper. Five responded and the results indicated on the bid tabulation sheet and we recommend purchasing the paper from Contract Paper Group for a total of $60,303.60. Item 2.4 is the following books were presented for the 28-day period of examination on April 14th, so those are all listed. We have some IB World Lit books, more IB World Lit, reading books for grade six. Item 2.5, bids have been accepted for commercial trash hauling service and recycle material hauling throughout the district. Administration recommends issuing a purchase order to the low and only bidder Waste Management Services of Saginaw at an annual cost of $36,224. Waste management will be visiting all of our schools to look at our recycling programs and help to enhance the programs we already have in place to save money on waste removal. 2.6, administration recommends the renewal of the Adult Ed Cooperative Agreement between Bullet Creek School District, Coleman Community Schools, Meridian Public Schools, and the Midland Public Schools for the 2014-15 school year. 2.7 is approval of the payment of the school system's bills for the month of 2014 as listed. And 2.8 is approval of, is requested to authorize payment for the following legal bills. Do we have a motion?
I will move to adopt consent agenda items 2.1 through 2.8 as written in the agenda.
No, we'd second that.
All right, moved by Member McFarland and supported by Member Singer. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? All right. Next up is request to address the board. I don't have any formal requests, do you have any? Is there, but is there anybody out there who would like to address the board? If so, please come forward at this time. If you could state your name and address.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Lisa Arnold. I live at 602 Columbia in Midland. I want to talk about the Great Lakes Bay Early College Program that we were told Midland Public Schools is no longer going to participate in. I'm going to start with early in the year. My daughter Kaylee took the initiative to learn about and apply for Great Lakes Bay Early College Program at SVSU this year. The program accepts high school students, completes their high school education, and may or may not lead to college credit by completion of the program. I'd like to talk about a few benefits about the program and then add why such a program could help students like my daughter Kaylee. Kaylee is what I would call kind of middle above average student, in which to say her grades are As, she gets an occasional C. She often scores fairly high in standardized assessments, but not usually up near the top. I think her experience is pretty common. She works very hard for her grades, she doesn't really require any special services except for some extra help from some very dedicated teachers, and she does pretty good overall. But I think she is a little bit underserved. I think that she could do better. I think she's in a large classroom and kind of expected to sit and toe the line in the classroom. She has a few chances to learn how to use technology in the classroom and how, maybe some chances to creatively solve problems, but not a whole lot of independence in her education. So Kaylee was kind of feeling she wanted to explore other options. We looked at AP and IB and she is in an IB class currently and taking advanced classes currently. We also looked at dual enrollment and did not feel those are the places for her necessarily. She did hear about the opportunity of GLEBAC, the Great Lakes Bay Program at SVSU. She spoke with other students who have gone through the program and are currently going through it, and she decided she wanted to talk to her counselor. So she made the appointment, she took the initiative, she spoke with her counselor in the very early spring, late winter time period. She asked us if we would take her to the meeting at SVSU, which we did, and she decided with our help that she would apply for this program. So while she was doing that, of course, I was looking at what is going on with this program and discovered some benefits. They have small class sizes, support from counselors and mentors, the ability to have some directed studies, the opportunity to repeat fewer classes from the end of high school, first year of college, and most importantly, using technology in the classroom and some real independent thinking and learning that goes on. I was excited, I was kind of excited to see her excitement about this program and that she would have a good chance for her academic career. Then about two weeks ago, we ran into a friend who said, "Hey, did you know that Midland Public Schools is no longer going to participate in this program?" And we said, "Well, we've talked to the counselor, we've talked to people at the school, and nobody told us that." So as soon as we heard this from our friend, who's really a mom from somebody who's currently in the program, we talked to an administrator at the high school who confirmed, yes, Midland Public Schools is not going to participate in the program. We were told that due to poor communication with SVSU and the fact that the program was being marketed differently as expected, that Midland Public Schools would no longer allow its students to be admitted into that consortium. So therefore Kaylee would not be able to attend GLEBAC in the fall. So her opportunity was really denied, and this was very upsetting to Kaylee obviously and to our family. We feel the excuses that were given from Midland Public Schools, abandoning the GLEBAC program, lack of communication and marketing, are a little bit senseless. I feel like if poor communication exists or existed, that it was the fault of both the SVSU and Midland Public Schools. One example of that would be that we went through this whole application progress and not being aware that it wasn't even an option, and we had been talking with the people at Midland Public Schools and at the high school. I feel like my child is being denied a little bit of personalization of her education and that traditional K through 12 learning is traditional, and traditional learning is not always the best for every student. And as a parent, I want my child to have the ability to exceed and to succeed and do the best that she can. Throughout this process, I feel learned to be a little bit of an advocate for herself and to be able to learn how to apply and learn other options. I also feel that the lack of community and lack of communication has fostered imbalance in the education, unmet needs of students who really need the best educational support as possible as they head to the transition between the childhood and adulthood. And I feel like these students are being shortchanged by not having this as an option. The last reason we were given for no longer participating in GLEBAC is obvious, which is financial. I don't feel this program is meant to be a war over funding of education, it's meant to serve students in the best way possible and meet their needs. So I feel like we need to ask ourselves, what is the best for each individual student? And what is then the student's best interest? Choice. Choices can be given economically in a way that benefit, benefits all the stakeholders in public education. We need cooperation, we definitely need communication, and we need to realize priorities which are students. I would like Midland Public Schools to do what's right for Kaylee and for other students who desire a non-traditional avenue of education. Reconsider this decision and please consider involvement in the GLEBAC program. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll look, we'll look into it and get back with you, okay? All right, is there anybody else who would like to address the board tonight? All right, moving on, I guess this is to you, Mike, for our Shining Star presentations.
We have two that we'd like to recognize this evening, two employees, as Dawn Wallace would want to come up. And as Dawn comes up, I'm going to read a little bit about her background. Dawn Wallace is a dedicated, respected Midland Public Schools bus driver. She began her employment in the MPS Transportation Department as a substitute bus driver in 1993. One of Mrs. Wallace's supervisors remarked, "Dawn is a safe driver. She is aware of where children are around and inside her bus. She is a friendly and helpful to her students. She is dependable, a team player, and a good employee." Yet another supervisor remarked, "Dawn is a hard-working employee. She is always here and gets along well with others. Dawn also helps train our new bus drivers and does a great job." Dawn was nominated for the Shining Star by an MPS colleague. Among his comments, the staff member wrote, "Dawn is an employee that everyone should have. Her attendance is excellent and is always looking out for the safety of her fellow bus drivers and students. She goes above and beyond to help anyone in need and finds a way to help with other employees and students' families." Congratulations Dawn on being named the May 2014 MPS Shining Star employee.
Thank you.
Give you that, and we just hope all the other members as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting kids there. Our second employee we'd like to recognize today is Keith Seibert. Mr. Keith Seibert began his career with Midland Public Schools in 1998 as a physical education teacher in grades six, seven, and eight at Northeast Middle School. Before coming to MPS, Keith was an elementary PE teacher in Grayling. In addition to his PE teaching duties, Keith has been track coach at both Midland High School and Northeast Middle School, as well as swimming coach at Northeast. Keith graduated from Saginaw Valley State University in 1995 with a Bachelor of Science degree. In 2003, Keith earned his Master's Degree in School Administration from Central Michigan University. One of Mr. Seibert's supervisors remarked, "Mr. Seibert continues to be an instructional leader in our building. His willingness to help out, his positive spirit are inspirational and motivating. He has a good sense of humor and relates well to students and other staff. Mr. Seibert is an exceptional educator on all levels." Yet another supervisor stated, "Keith is one of the most quality teachers that I have ever had the chance to work with. He is a big part of what makes Northeast the great school it is. He is a bright, kind, and upbeat. His dedication to students is amazing. Keith Seibert is an individual that gives teaching a good name. The influence he has on children is life-altering." Keith was nominated for the Shining Star Award by an MPS colleague. This person wrote, "I am nominating Keith because I feel that he does a great job of making kids feel important, not only in his class but around the school as well. He makes a great effort in getting to know the kids he has in his class and around the school by being out in the hallways, in between class, and during his prep. I've looked up Keith's methods for teaching for many years, and he was a great role model for me when I student taught. Keith goes above and beyond by working with kids that need the extra help and staying after when kids need his help. He always has his door open if students need to talk to him. His attitude is always chipper and friendly. He jokes a lot with kids, which I, which makes the kids feel comfortable and makes the less athletic kids in physical education feel like they are part of the team and are involved." Congratulations to Keith Seibert on being the May 2014 MPS Shining Star employee. Let's get everyone stand. Great job, Keith.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Well deserved.
Thank you very much.
All right, congratulations to Dawn and Keith. Moving on, we have a presentation from the fifth grade music programs.
We'll have Bridget Hockmeyer, Tracy Renfro, should I start it? Yes, no? Did I throw that off?
You can, we were going to let our music teacher do it.
Good evening, my name is Barbara Jacques and I'm the music teacher at Plymouth Elementary School, and I'm so thankful that you invited us to come and sing for you tonight. We are going to start now, enjoy, and you will notice that we are going to invite you to join us for a piece in a little bit.
Everybody has their own special formula, a little bit of this and a little bit of that. Taken from our own line back in the history and culture, this speech was forever a rap. Add a social blend of environment and school to the mix that includes the family. Put it all together in a personal package and marketing script. Label it, label it, label it, label it. Identity is the world of me. Oh, my identity is reserved for me. Oh, my identity is a fact you'll see. I was, I am, I'll be. Identity is the world of me. Oh, my identity is reserved for me. Oh, my identity is a fact you'll see. I was, I am, I'll be. Me. I am one of many who live on planet Earth. I take my role here seriously. I am part of all that's going on 'cause I believe in me. I am a part of everything, a part of everyone everywhere. I am here and I belong. I'm a citizen of this world, of this world. I am one of many who live on planet Earth. I take my role here seriously. I am part of all that's going on 'cause I believe in me. I am a part of everything, a part of everyone everywhere. I am here and I belong. I'm a citizen of this world, of this world. I am a part of everything, a part of everyone everywhere. I am here and I belong. I'm a citizen of this world. I am a part of everything, a part of everyone everywhere. I am here and I belong. I'm a citizen. I'm a citizen. I'm a citizen of this world. Of this world, I am. Oh, I know it starts with me. Yes, I know it starts with me. We're changing the world, one person at a time. We're making it better, don't you see? We're changing the world, one person at a time. The very first person is me. For I know it starts with me. Yes, I know it starts with me. It starts with me. We're changing the world, one person at a time. We're making it better, don't you see? We're changing the world, one person at a time. The very first person is me. For I know it starts with me. Yes, I know it starts with me. It starts with me. All blessings of earth I will share with you. And if you share them too, the world will change. The world will grow. And it's all because I know. Yes, I know it starts with me. Yes, I know it starts with me. Oh, I know it starts with me. Yes, I know it starts with me. It starts with me. It starts with me. It starts with me. It starts with me.
You ready?
But I can see goodness will see your soul. So let your light shine and work a living. Make every man a change our world. Free to reach out, let's learn to help. Find our hidden voice. Share your love and share with the others. Don't tell your friends or lies is true. And make a change to where we're from. We ain't no school anymore anymore. This is the hell where our actions and thoughts. Make every man a change our world. Make every man a change our world. Make every man a change our world. Remember, let's cheer for Plymouth. We pioneers will lead the way. With colors so true, red, white, and blue. We will never stray. Our spirit leads us never harm earth. We're proud of what we do. No matter what the test, we give our best. We'll be safe to you.
Plymouth Choir.
Hope so are we.
Nice job.
Thank you all very much.
That was beautiful.
What?
My kid's doing that.
Okay, I know, that was, that was very complex. You weren't, it was both hands.
I was trying to skip, couldn't have gotten me both going.
Thank you all very much for coming tonight. You all look so nice.
I love your songs.
Thanks for coming tonight, guys. Thanks.
They don't even get to hear us praise them.
I know, that's what I thought they would stay around to talk to, but. Apparently, they've been given too much homework tonight, maybe.
Yes, I've heard that. There were some heavy backpacks.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Roger Stevens. And I am headed for the conclusion of my 21st year as an employee of Midland Public Schools. And when I was hired, I was given the plum assignments of doing elementary band at Chestnut Hill, and actually Plymouth Elementary, as well as Northeast Middle School, at the time, Northeast Intermediate. When the Northeast program grew too big, I had to give up Plymouth. But I've remained at Chestnut Hill for all 21 years, and it's been a treat. One of the things that I want to remark on is that consistency. And in fact, you might be surprised to know that all three of the 5th grade teachers at Chestnut Hill, when I was hired 21 years ago, are still there. And one of them has been assigned now to 4th grade. But the opportunity to work with the same people, develop the camaraderie, the understanding of how each program works and interfaces, has really been a benefit to our program. Tonight, I'd like to talk about and focus on the elementary instrumental program. A lot of times, when you talk to the public, as you have an opportunity to do frequently, people will remark about the marching bands. They were at the Dow High and Midland High football game. They were amazed at the 400 students on the football field. They may have attended a concert where our orchestras were combined, our high school orchestras. They may have attended a concert where our choral ensembles from the high schools were combined. You can travel around the state, and you can find many schools that have a good band, many schools that have a good orchestra, many schools that have fine vocal music programs. You'll find somewhat fewer that have two out of those three. When you get to all three programs, and all operating at a very high level, you'll find only a few. And Midland should be very proud that they're one of them. However, the fact is, those groups don't happen in a vacuum. They don't happen without a great deal of support and a great feeding of the roots. And you just saw one great example of the beginnings of the programs that ultimately culminate with the ones that draw so much positive public attention. There's an amusing myth for some of those of us who teach music, that we just walk into the room, wave our arms, and music happens. Well, that's not true. You know, a beautiful plant doesn't grow and blossom without healthy roots. And your professional music education staff at the elementary level includes Mrs. Darla Iaquinta, Mrs. Tracy Kempzel, Mrs. Jan Walner, Mrs. Barbara Jacques, Mrs. Tina DeLonge, and Mrs. Sarah Haskett. Now, I'd like to do a little overview of the elementary general curriculum. This curriculum has been in place for a number of years, and were based on the content standards and benchmarks talked about nationwide. These content standards talk about singing, performing, improvising, reading and notating music, listening, describing, and evaluating performances, and understanding the relationships between music, the other arts, and the tie that music has to history and the culture of each society. Now, we hear an awful lot of talk about 21st century skills. We want our students to graduate with them. What are they? Well, if you've performed on the stage in front of an audience, think about your level of confidence when you make that sales presentation, or how you will understand one culture versus another when you have to travel internationally. Now, the meeting time for elementary music is only once a week, and that's very slim. So you know that your faculty is doing a great job with what they're teaching and getting the students to get through all this. As we focus on the 4th grade curriculum, we note that developmentally appropriate steps have been taken, and they're moving forward through these benchmarks that we talked about. And in fact, there are also special education needs and areas of developmental help. For instance, coordinative skills, auditory and listening skills coupled with movement, speech, other areas of learning such as reading, body awareness, and language. And last but not least, especially for those special needs learners, a sense of achievement, enjoyment, group participation. Now, at this time, we have a PowerPoint of our 4th grade concert. Last month, we had a 4th grade music celebration concert. Mrs. Parrots was kind enough to provide a PowerPoint for us. One of the most exciting events of the MPS music program each spring is the 4th grade music celebration concert. Preparation for this concert begins several weeks in advance for the 4th grade students as they learn a song in the Mendy language from the movie Amistad, "Dry Your Tears, Africa." Students are bussed to the Midland Center for the Arts, courtesy of the Midland Symphony League Educational Outreach Program, an example of a partnership with a community resource that many may not know about. The 4th grade students are treated to hearing some of the most talented musicians of our schools, the Midland and Dow High School Symphony Orchestras, the MHS Meister Singers, Dow High Chorus, and the Midland Center Stage Youth Honors Choirs. After singing our national anthem, the students have the opportunity to hear the special sound quality of each of the string, woodwind, brass, and percussion instruments. The vocals students are up next, as they demonstrate the unique sound of soprano, alto, tenor, and bass. Students thoroughly enjoy hearing the full high school choirs create "The Rainstorm" with the tune "Africa" by Toto, and this year, the immensely popular "Highlights from Frozen." The instrumentalists engage in a fascinating musical competition called "The Orchestra Games." The highlight of the concert is "Dry Your Tears, Africa," when all of the 4th graders, the choirs, and the orchestras perform together. I'd like to share a few of the comments that the students provided. The 4th graders were asked to do some writing when they returned to their schools. And here's just a couple of excerpts. From Woodcrest, "Dear orchestra, I really enjoyed your performance. The instrument that I liked the most were the cymbals. I love the noise the cymbals make. Thank you for playing music." I'm sure that's going to be one very happy parent. Dear orchestra, I had such a good time at your concert. It was awesome. At the concert, I learned a lot about the different notes, such as high, low, loud, and soft notes. I don't play an instrument, but next year in 5th grade, I am planning on playing something. I am thinking about playing the trumpet or clarinet, but I really don't know yet. But thank you so much for your performance. I loved it." And then from Plymouth, they were provided with some prompts. "When I think of all the instruments, I like these best." And this person said they are flute, bass, and violin, because I love to hear the calm music of those beautiful instruments. They said, "It just brings happiness. It was so awesome, it brought giggles to me." So it's a great opportunity for them to learn about things. And what happens then with that transition is that through the 4th grade curriculum, and through this opportunity with this concert, the students now will enter 5th grade with some knowledge of the instruments. And so when the band and orchestra teacher go into that school at the beginning of the 5th grade school year, and they make their presentation about beginning band and beginning orchestra, the students will have some clues about what kinds of things they like, what kinds of sounds they want to explore, and so forth. I remember a few years ago, I had a young man come up to me after my presentation at Chestnut Hill. And he said, "Well, I'd really like to join band, or maybe orchestra, but I don't play an instrument." And I looked at him and I said, "You're exactly the person we're looking for." You know, we take the students from nothing. They're just coming to us with a desire to learn, and that's what the staff does. Having this background provided by the elementary music faculty, we see a quicker assimilation of note names. Certainly, literacy is a huge part of our program. We see a great confidence in the counting of rhythms. I will use with my 5th graders the opportunity, because I'm at Chestnut Hill and I work with Mrs. Iaquinta, I'll be able to say to the students, "Now, let's go back to Mrs. Iaquinta's room. How would you say that rhythm in her room?" And they relate to that immediately. And then I can take it from there, and take them from something they know into something that would be new to them, in a new system of counting. Even in middle school, I'll sometimes say, "Let's get in a time machine and go back to Mrs. Walner's classroom, or Mrs. Jacques's classroom, or whatever. And how would you have done it there?" So when you're at home, you now have a problem-solving strategy, even if you're confused a little bit by what we're doing here. You can go back to something that you are familiar with and work toward the new stuff. In conclusion, I just want you to think about the success at the top of our program is a direct reflection of the excellence of our music staff at the beginning levels and the support we have received in the past. Our staff has high expectations of themselves, as well as for their students. You will see many of us performing with various community groups, such as Midland Symphony, Midland Community Orchestra, Midland Concert Band, Chemical City Band, Good Company, Resonators Percussion Ensemble, and Camerata Singers, as well as in many area churches. Being so involved in actively making music ourselves leads us to place a high value on each student and each minute we have with those students, as well as every resource we can use.
Thank you very much.
Nice job. Really nice job.
Sounded wonderful.
Wonderful. I don't know if anyone has comments, if they're going to come back for questions.
How much did we have to pay for the tickets tonight?
I don't know. It's wonderful to actually see two shows.
Very nice.
I went to the 4th grade musical event, but it was quite doof, pretty powerful.
Oh, yeah.
Sounded a lot better than it did on the screen there.
Wonderful. All right, does anyone have any comments, or shall we go on?
I think it's great how we have the 4th and 5th grade programs to feed the high school programs. And you do, you're exactly right. You have to start at the beginning, and to have these opportunities here at Midland Public Schools makes it a great district to be a part of, something to be proud of.
I think Mr. Stevens touched on the fact that it's amazing what they can do, and Ms. Thompson, too, in seven months. Students that have never been exposed to music, and you go to those end-of-the-year concerts, and it says a lot about what our staff, parents, and students do, so, thanks for coming.
Especially with such little time during the week.
Yeah.
Right. I thought it was neat how Barbara Jacques, in with the 5th graders, not only worked on their musical talents, but also chose pieces that built their self-esteem and built up who they were and values and beliefs. I thought that was a really neat idea. Kind of brings in the PYP learning.
Yeah, I think it's great how we have so many, just she was saying, 23 kids in the orchestra are 21, and I know it was that way when my children were going through, too. It's wonderful that not only do we feed a band program, but an orchestra program and all the choir programs. It's wonderful that we offer those options. All right. Well, thanks to them again. They left before we could ask them questions.
They'll watch on TV, I'm sure.
Yes, yes. And for anyone out there, and even the parents left to remind them that we do retelevise these. So if anyone would like to watch them again, please go online and, or onto TV and watch them. All right, next up, do you want to introduce our next?
Yep, we're going to turn from the arts to budgets. And we're going to turn it over to John Surles and Midland County Educational Service Agency in their budget. Was perfect timing walking in, John.
I want to hear them play, too. And I'll just remind everyone that this presentation can be watched again and again and again.
That's the point where the red button goes click.
But you will explain it so well, the first time there will be no need, right?
My name is John Surles, and I'm the superintendent of Midland County ESA. I'd like to introduce Mark Oriole. Mark joined us in October as our chief financial officer, and has been doing a great job of We're roughly at about $3 million that we get in federal revenues, so it's about $150,000 decrease. Hopefully, we don't have that much of a decrease. Property taxes, tax value for the whole county as a whole was up 0.5% or half percent, so we'll get a little more revenue there. Of course, that does tie in with the enhancement mileage, which is just a little bit under $5 million for the county as a whole, for which Midland Public Works gets their applicable shares, so you should see also, you know, a half percent increase in enhancement mileage. Our GSRP consortium is in the general fund, stands for Great Start Readiness Program. It's a multi-county consortium that we have, so it's very large for us. It's a, we're projecting next year to be about $11 million in this consortium. So we do have a lot of additional revenues associated expenses with that in our general fund. Medicaid funds for next year, 2014, should be similar to the 2014 year, which is current year. The 2014 year did see a very large increase compared to the prior years, so you just receive some additional funds in 2014. Going into some more of the expense assumptions for the budget, our salaries, the teachers are eligible for a slight off-schedule stipend that is intended on their evaluation, so some of them may get it, some may not. Our paraprofessional ranks, overall, there are some that are eligible for some, it's probably not going to be a very major increase, because I don't think many of them actually will meet their specifications for that raise. As of right now, our current insurance carrier has told us our insurance rate should go up 22%. However, we do have caps in place and co-page premium sharing for employees, which will probably only make the increase probably 6% or 7% at the most. We do currently have another bid out for, I think, July 1st timeframe, that we may get actually lower rates, so we'll wait and see on that. The retirement rate this year, with the 147(c) state funds, we're pretty much capped at a certain dollar amount or percentage rate, so any additional increase in the retirement rate is offset by the 147(c) state fund, so the retirement rate really has no effect on our increased cost next year.
You can see the list of things here, some of the various areas in the general fund that we provide services in, and as I move through, you're very familiar with all of these various areas in terms of ways that we provide support. I wanted to touch on just a few areas that I think are increasingly important as we move through these times of smaller budgets. It's really important, I believe, that we continue to develop consortium with other ISDs so that we can leverage resources as our funds continually decrease. So as we bring more people into consortia, we are able to provide higher-quality service at a lower cost, and some of these areas have been areas of focus for us over the last few years. Technology services has been a great way for us to save money at the ESA and then offer the opportunity for locals to take advantage of the services that we provide. So Midland ESA, along with Saginaw ISD, and just recently, the Bayernac ISD have come together to provide service in the area of technology, not only for ourselves, but for locals that might be interested. Next, the, as Mark spoke about, the early childhood consortium, the GSRP, is something that is around an $11 million in and out for us, but if you look at it as a service that we're providing, it is increasing quality, not only here in Midland County for four-year-olds in preschool, but across this region. Increasing quality of preschool education across the region is a win for all of us, because kids are more and more mobile all the time, so we want to make sure that everyone's getting that great start. Next, I wanted to mention pupil accounting. Pupil accounting is another consortium across five ISDs, which helps us to lower costs and provide the required accounting services at the ISD level. And finally, instructional services. Our instruction has increased in terms of the number of ISDs. Now, last year, I told you about the second year, the third year, of how we had three ISDs working together, Bayernac, Midland, and Saginaw. We are increasing that by a fourth and possibly a fifth in this year, so that we have more and more ISDs working together, leveraging resources and our expertise over a wider region. So again, more people collaborating in order to provide higher-quality service to the local districts at a lower cost, and those are good things. I'd also like to talk a bit about special education, because it's certainly on all of our minds, right? In terms of our par educator contract that Mark mentioned, we have a new contract, we're in the first year of a three-year agreement, which works to increase quality and over time lower costs. So you think about par educators, we need to make sure that those in the classroom are working at the highest possible level, but also working as a team and increasing that overall value add to the classroom, right? So the way that we can do that is by increasing training, working better as a team, and one of the ways that we chose to do that, not only from the professional development aspect, but also trying to attract and retain individuals who have that desire to really work hard to be in those classrooms. So we did that by increasing the pay slightly and then offering health benefits. At a time when everyone's trying to get away from health benefits, we believe that over time, it will actually be more cost-effective in terms of attraction and retention to increase wages and to offer the minimum standard according to Affordable Care Act of what healthcare must be in terms of the, all the definitions. What we project is, over that three-year period, while the first year is actually an increase in costs, the second, the third years show, we project around $100,000 or so in savings, okay? So slight increase the first year, around $30,000, and then multiple years of savings. Because of the increased quality, we're able to reduce the numbers in each classroom. So that's something that we're very much committed to, and the local superintendents and I are, we have plans to work together to try to increase quality and continue to lower costs. In terms of the post-secondary population, you heard me talk last year about that number continuing to increase, because there's more and more kids that are 18 or older that can't graduate from high school because of the graduation requirements. That means that there are more and more kids that are eligible to stay in special education programs. What we want to be able to do is to make sure that those programs are high-quality and that they can earn skills that are requisite for moving into the community and holding jobs where they can contribute to society and feel like they are actual members of our community. So some of the programs that we've worked on, first, you see programs move to the Sugnet Site. Well, we had programs across the county, actually three different programs in three different sites, where we consolidated those into our Sugnet Site, and so we're saving money on the rent. We did a little bit of renovations to make sure that we have space that is adequate for kids and for the programming that we offer. For example, we have a new apartment. We created like an apartment type of living space so that kids can practice living on their own, practice doing dishes, ironing their clothes, doing laundry and such. We also added what we call the hub, which is kind of our version of Starbucks, and that place is self-sufficient. People are coming in off the street, and you're certainly welcome to come in anytime, you know, 8 to 4, and have a coffee or snack. We're even having lunches there now. That is giving kids the opportunity to learn skills in the food service area and then be able to exit our programming and hold real jobs. The third thing that I would like to mention is, here's the hub and then Poolside Cafe. The Poolside Cafe is in cooperation with the community center, and that provides us the opportunity to have a cafe environment where kids are learning to provide food service. So if you get a chance, you haven't been to the Poolside Cafe, stop over for lunch. The pizza is amazing. It will remind you of sitting in a cafe in Rome, I promise. Finally, Bicycle Recycle is a cooperation between this club, Bicycle Recycle, and the ESA. They collect bicycles from all over the county and provide them at no cost to kids with low, kids of low income or special needs. And it's a great opportunity for kids in our programs to work with their hands, to learn another skill, which they could then go out in one of our three bike shops in town and actually earn a living. So it's a really cool program. I wanted to also mention some of the other work that I've been trying to do in bringing people together. We're calling ourselves the Disability Coalition, but really, it's a group of people from the Disability Network, from the Rees Endeavor, that's our mayor, Community Mental Health, and the Arnold Center. People coming together to talk about what we have in common and what we do separately. So for example, we all have job developers. We wonder, is there a way for us to bring our job developers together and work cooperatively instead of all coming in and developing our own work, kind of in silos? We think that that's one example of where we can, just by sitting together and talking, we can, over time, save costs and also do a better job at serving the population. All right, I've got them. Wanted to mention Longview. Last year at this time, I talked to you about the Longview Project, how you sold us that beautiful facility and how we've invested about $2.6 million, all raised through community grants and fundraising efforts. That place is, if you haven't had an opportunity to see it, is amazing. It's a beautiful facility, and kids and families are all there receiving the services that they need in a single facility. It's an amazing concept and one that is working very well, serving kids from Midland Public. In terms of career and technical education, we've brought on Don Johnson to help work with our career and technical education programs, and we have a couple new things. We have a summer construction camp in cooperation with the Associated Builders and Contractors and with the Greater Michigan Construction Academy, and we are very happy that we're offering a new program in the fall, and that program will offer kids the opportunity to learn the construction trade. So they'll, in the first semester, they'll have a survey of 10 different opportunities, and in the second semester, they'll choose one of four high-demand jobs to pursue, jobs like HVAC, like plumbing, like welding, and like drywalling. In those different areas, we're working directly with the contractors to see what are the most four top hiring jobs at any one time, and we can become very nimble. So we might offer these four this year and change next year to a different four based on what the market is driving. It's a great concept, because in schools, we don't tend to be as nimble as we ought to be to respond to market values, and this program, I think, will do that. So we're excited about that. Back to Mark.
Okay, now what I want to do is kind of give a comparative summary of fund balances and revenues and expenses of our two funds, the general fund and the special ed funds. For the general fund, we are, like I mentioned, are part of the GSRP consortium. This year, the middle bar, we jumped up quite a bit, I think like about $9 million is that amount, and next year, we expect about $11 million, so it's going to increase our total revenue to almost about $20 million in our general fund, where the expenses are going to pretty much follow that, because with the consortium, what we do is we receive the money and we pass it out to other locals, so revenue and expenses pretty much are the same. On the right over there, and I have a little bit better graph later on, but we can see the fund balance in our general fund. This year is going down quite a bit, because we did have several one-time expenditures and some transfers that we had to make to cover some expenses, so it is going to go down a little bit. Next year, I think we're only budgeting to be about $100,000 in the hole in our general fund, for which, you know, cut back on some things, we'll probably break even on that. In the special education fund, for this year, in the middle again, the revenues are up, and the primary reason for that is we did receive a lot of Medicaid money, over $3 million. A lot of that is both the current year amounts went up, but we also have settlements from prior years, going back to '08, '09, so we got a lot of extra money for each of those years. So our revenue this year is up quite a bit because of that. As you can see, for next year, we're actually scheduled to go down, because the Medicaid will probably be about $1.2 million. And the expenses, both of the years are higher than what they were in previous year. So overall, then, our fund balance, you can see, actually, it goes up this year, but it's primarily because we do have, I think, $666,000 of expected settlement funds that are going to come in that we're going to distribute actually next year. So the fund balance will go up this year, but then when we distribute it next year, will actually go down, lower than what we were at the end of last year. So it's just kind of a little bit up and down in the fund balance amount. I think we're scheduled to be about $1 million in the hole next year in the special ed fund, primarily because of that Medicaid. Also going to help.
I'd just like to mention that we have taken a look at, over the last couple of, couple, three years actually, what that fund equity in special ed, in the special ed account should be. So the special ed plan says one number, and we've been carrying a different number, and what we've tried to do is to be transparent in terms of talking about what should that number be, what's that ideal number? We've pretty much, through conversation, not only internally, but with the local superintendents, arrived at a number of 13. That 13% should be about the right number to hold in fund equity, because we have to be cognizant of the fact that as programs have been flowed, sometimes we have to open a program, and the typical cost of opening a program is somewhere between $100,000 and $150,000, and could be more depending on the specializations that are required. So in order to be responsible, I think that somewhere around that 13% is our target number. So we've been moving that number down over the past couple of years, and we're getting closer to the 13.
This kind of gives a little bit better graphic of the fund balance percentages. As you see, the general fund, I think, we're at 17% at the end of last year, and we're actually projecting to be close to 6% at the end of 2014, '15 year, but we should stabilize at that point. Special education fund, I believe, the exact amount was 22.8% last year at the end of the year. Like I said, it'll jump up to 24.7, but then it'll go down to actually 18% in 2014, '15, so we are starting to go down a little bit towards 13% that Don mentioned. This, up next couple of slides, is nothing more than a breakdown of our revenues and expenses in both the general and the special ed funds, to kind of give you a better idea of what's in there. In our general fund, the property taxes, $5 million of that is the enhancement mileage, the other $630,000 is our operating money that we get. All the local sources is our early childhood program that we have. I believe we see about $700,000 there, so that's the biggest part of that amount. The state sources is our GSRP consortium. As you can see, that amount is close to $11 million. Federal sources, we receive the Perkins Grant, which we run through our general fund, and our inter-district sources and others is the buildings we recharge, operate technology services, or schoolwork to other districts, and there's a lot of other small things that go in there. So that's our total revenue in the general fund is $19,408,000. On the expenditure side, we have very little in instruction, we're just $500 there, so the majority of ours is support services. Community services would be the early childhood program. We have a little bit of capital outlay plan, and you can see the two biggest expenditures on our books are really just nothing more than pass-throughs. Enhancement mileage we receive, we pass out to the locals, there's $5 million there, and transfers to other districts is the GSRP money for which we receive and just pass out. So really, $15 million of our $19.6 million budget is just nothing more than us passing money through. In special education, property taxes, that is basically the PA-18 revenue that we This, up next couple slides is nothing more than a breakdown of our revenues and expenses in both the general and the special ed funds, to kind of give you a better idea of what's in there. In our general fund, the property taxes, $5 million of that is the enhancement village. The other $630,000 is our operating money that we get. All the local sources is our early childhood program that we have. I believe we receive about $700,000 there, so that's the biggest part of that amount. The state sources is our GSRP consortium. As you can see, that amount is close to $1 million. Federal sources, we received Perkins grant, which we run through our general fund. And our inter-district sources and others is the buildings we recharge, operate technology services, or schoolwork to other districts. And there's a lot of other small things that go in there. So that's our total revenue in the general fund is $19,408,000. On the expenditure side, we have very little in instruction, there's just $500 there. So the majority of ours is support services. Community services would be the early childhood program. We have a little bit of capital outlay plan. And you can see the two biggest expenditures on our books are really just nothing more than pass-throughs. Enhancement village we receive, we pass out to the locals, there's the $5 million there. And transfers to other districts is the GSRP money for which we receive and it's passed out. So really 15 million of our $19.6 million budget is just nothing more than us passing money through. On the special education, property taxes, that is basically the PAA-18 revenue that we receive in. Other local sources, that's the Medicaid money, majority of that is 1.2 million. Our state sources comes from our FTE account times the foundation amount. Federal sources, about $3 million of that is the IDEA special education grant, and there's some other smaller grants that we were getting there. And the inter-district sources is the tuition that we charge locals for the special ed services that we provide. So there's roughly $13,700 there. And then on the special education expenditures, instruction is the in-classroom expenditures for our teachers. Our support services would be the OT, PT services, social worker, et cetera. We do have some capital outlay plan for some of the classrooms. And the transfers to others is nothing more than the transfers that we give back out to the locals for the remaining amount of the PAA-18 formula. So we have both tuition coming in that you pay us, and then we also distribute money going back out. So that's what's included in the transfers to others. The total expenditures there is $14,773,000, for which, like I said, roughly about a million dollars will be going in the hole next year of '14, '15, for which $666,000 goes because of the Medicaid transfers. So we can kind of explain why we're going in the hole. That is the last slide there. At that point, I guess, is there any questions on any of the information I gave you or any particular questions you may have in regards to the thought of yourselves that you gave me answer, right?
I got a few. Yeah, just to comment with Mr. Searls, like you're saying about the fund balance, I mean, you have a fair amount of instruction with your line of business that has to occur during the summer, right? I mean, there's sessions that go on, especially for some of the younger home visits that...
Well, it's extended school year, right?
Right, so, you know, you have, I think certainly that's understandable, you know, having a fund balance like that to carry the bills through the summer. I think that that's, that sounds reasonable. And just curious with looking at the future for Medicaid payments, I know that's a bit of a wild card from the FFO, from our financial committee. Do you, do you think that the predictability, that's going to go up or down, or just remain a wild card as far as going forward to '14, '15?
We expect that it's going to remain fairly stable. We think that we have, in Midland County, all of our districts are doing an extremely amazing job of doing the billing for Medicaid. And in fact, we're probably doing one of the best in anywhere in the state. And so we have a very high expectation. But we think that we're doing about as good as we possibly can. So we expect that it's going to remain fairly stable.
So in the future budget, when payments come in, do you think they're going to be a little higher, or you think it'd be more, because we had the extra that came in this time for the back years, there's more due to the back years?
There's always that opportunity for adjustments because you're kind of like working with a year behind. The interesting thing about the '09, '10 year, '08, '09, and '09, '10 was that there was like a, the perfect storm of problems that happened. I think I may have spoken about this a bit last year, but there was a software conversion, and in the midst of the software conversion at the state level, they lost the data. And so we had to resubmit the data, and it took nearly three years to work out the issue with them. And that, we hope, won't ever happen again, because that was ridiculous, right? But hopefully, as, as time goes on, this will kind of stabilize a bit. But it's good to see that, you know, with Mark's word, that there are the additional reimbursements that are coming in. So it's a good question.
Yeah.
Some of this kind of still ball work, but...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. And then just one more, if I may, the, is the, what's the main factor behind the increase in the rates? It's not really the utilization, like you're having, you know, workers, you have more rates of, of, you know, filing claims, that type of thing. So what's the reason for the increase?
Actually, I think it is that. I think that...
Okay, so it's the utilization, maybe the overall amount of the budget towards?
Well, I think it's, it's the fact that we are providing services that are Medicaid-eligible, and then not just us, everyone across the district. And I think that we're keeping good tabs on who is doing the reimbursements and when.
I think it's in terms of personnel. In terms of personnel, did your rates go up?
Are you talking about their insurance?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about, like the insurance rates, like for the personnel.
I'm still talking about Medicaid.
Yeah, oh, sorry, I was going on to something else, yeah.
I'm not talking about Medicaid.
It's been a thorn in your side, I know, yeah.
The issue with the healthcare rates is that we, over the past three years, have had almost no increase. In fact, the last two years, we've actually reduced our insurance costs. And we've done that by changing our deductible rates. We have a group that's experience rated, so we have been able to reimburse the deductibles. And we've taken a $10,000 family deductible, so five and 10, and then backfilled that. But our, the backfilling, the reimbursement of that, of that high deductible has been very cost-effective. While we were exposed to, let's say, a half a million dollars, the actual amount that we are paying for the reimbursement or for that is somewhere around $80,000 to $90,000 over the past three years. So we felt that it would be in our best interest to increase that deductible. And increasing the deductible has allowed us to keep those costs at bay. So we're all familiar with the hard cap. We're actually below the hard cap, and we have, in our contract, the agreement to share increases. So any increase is shared 50% with those employees, covered at 50% with the administration. So both of us, we have the incentive to make sure that we're trying to bring down those costs. And again, with 22% increase, and 22% is a lot, but it's also due to a lot of those, what do you call, all of those codes, like, can you say some of those? I don't know, for Medicaid, or for, that are related to the Affordable Care Act.
Sure, the requirements.
Those requirements and the taxes, and they're for research and all of those things. I don't have them all memorized yet, but all of those contribute significantly to the amount that this, that we see in this jump. Again, worst case, 22% mitigated half and half, right? And we're fairly confident that we'll be able to find lower rates, because we're already seeing that there are some other options. When you have the opportunity to share those costs, you know, half of the 22 going to the, to most of our employees, there is definitely the motivation to say, oh yeah, let's look at this other plan, which might be more cost-effective than I'm talking about.
Thanks.
I was actually going to ask on that. So do you see that, though, the 22% as being like a one-time thing because of the factors you said, or is it something you're going to have to keep an eye on that? I don't know if you have any indication of that.
Well, it's one of those things that we're all to keep an eye on, right? Because we just, it seems like that is the one area that we just can't control. Although, we're doing our best to do that, right? We're all trying to do wellness activities, we're looking at new plans. I mean, we're, it used to be we quoted insurance every three years, now we do it every year to see the, make sure that the rates that we're getting are the best, more flexible in changing from one plan to another. All of those factors have to be there, part of the mix is now because we don't know exactly what those rates are going to look like from here on in. 22% seems like a lot, right? But I've also heard others higher than that. So we definitely got, always keep our eye on that wall, just like you are.
And what about, you had said, I think it was on your very first slide, about your FTE being flat? Is that the number of students that you're supporting?
FTE is both in terms of students, fairly flat, and in terms of the number of employees, fairly flat.
Okay, because then you had said another point that there are more students in the 18 and older, that you're starting to services, that mean you're seeing a drop-off of the...
Yeah, kids are shifting to an older age.
Okay, so it's a shift, it's not an increase.
It is a shift, but coming down the pike are a lot of, a lot more kids with special needs, especially in the autism population. We're seeing that continue to spike, just like we see nationally. So that's something that we need to be aware of.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, again, we appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk with you every year. I did want to mention Kevin Hies here, our board president, and I appreciate him being here as well. So thanks again for the time and for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to say one thing is that I know Linda's retiring this year, so I just wanted to publicly say, I think I know her about 11 years old. You guys are going to be missing a big part of financial knowledge, that's for sure.
We know that.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, do you want to announce this one, Mike?
Sure, we got Kathy Parrotts, who's going to come up and talk about the Looking Sharp campaign, which all of you are familiar with. I think Kathy's somewhere behind the screen coming up.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Parrotts, and it's my pleasure and privilege to teach band and orchestra at Midland High School, and for the last four years serve as lead teacher for the district for music. And what I have, this is my speech. I have no speech tonight, just an update. And, do I get the... Ah, see, wait, wait a minute. There we go. To give a little background, as you may remember, the Tuning Up Fund that was started was to buy instruments and equipment that wasn't covered in the sinking fund who, that provided us our new facilities and renovated facilities in both high schools for music. That fund gave us a total of $49,959.83, our fund total, which was used to buy instruments, as you can see, some of the violas that we were able to purchase, Midland High lockers, which we had not had lockers before this time, stands and chairs for our new rooms. Larger instruments that needed to be replaced, some of them as much as 30 years old. Woodwinds and strings were able to support, some of the larger ones that students typically would not be able to afford to buy. Direction going. That led to, we need new uniforms. But that particular fund was specified to only pay for equipment. We needed a fund that could pay for uniforms. We went to the Midland Foundation and said, can we create another fund, a partnership with Midland Public Schools, and use the tuning up as a template for Looking Sharp? And as you can see, we really did have a need. We didn't need to have those kinds of wardrobe malfunctions on the marching field. And our choir dresses as well, were ripping at the seams and being patched up with duct tape and safety pins. So we really did have this deep need. This is the first purchase with, with the funds that we have. The Dow Choir was able to outfit their choir with new dresses and new tuxes and ties and sashes that, these were purchased in December. Currently, we are so very fortunate because we have good music programs, but we have the support of the community to help fund those programs. So many schools have had to cut their programs or eliminate, choose between orchestra, band, and choir, eliminate one of those. But in Midland, we've got the tremendous community support so that we can keep going. As you can see, the tremendous pressure support that we've had from the Strosterdach or Gerstach, the Midland 100, and the huge contribution by the community, over $61,000 from individuals and the music parents, which speaks volumes about the support of the overall community. Held at the Midland Area Community Foundation right now, we have over $125,000. And with, I'm sure you all know about the wonderful support of the Herbert H. and Grace Adeau Foundation that gave us $75,000, which is in a restricted fund, to spend for new uniforms. So total to date raised is 2,000, over $200,000. We have an additional $2,000 now from Ford Lincoln. You may have seen, we ran a little fundraiser, if you came in and tried a new car out, took it for a test drive, they gave $20 for each person that came in to test drive those. And it was a horrible rainy Saturday, they put up a tent for us, and they said, this has been great for them, great for us, over $2,000 contribution, and they want to do it again for us next year. Okay, so so far, the update is Dow High Choir, 87 outfits, HH Dow, 70, Midland High Marching Band, we, we had 52 uniforms, replacing the worst of those, and new drum major uniforms, which we very badly needed. Our total expenditures to date are 70,000. We have an available fund balance of 132,000, and we still need to meet our goal, 47,408, and we're going strong with that. We still need to purchase the Dow Orchestra Concert Band and Orchestra uniforms, and at Midland High Choir and Orchestra, and we just about got those selected, and a concert band uniform. So that's, that's where we are right now. And we do want to say a big thank you to the Midland Area Community Foundation for housing those funds for us so that people could get tax receipts for making their contributions. And they have also printed our donation cards and given us envelopes and tremendous support. Anybody have any questions?
Really just thank you. Thank you for helping out with organizing and it's great.
My pleasure.
I had a chance to go to the holiday performance at Central Middle School for the Christmas performance, and that was the first, picture you showed of the, of the black gowns, that was the first performance in those, those uniforms, they looked really sharp.
They make the kids feel so tremendous when they, they get dressed up and everything is beautiful, and it just, it raises the level of performance when they feel like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mike.
Back to me. 2013 Safety Awards. The Safety Committee is, a great pleasure to inform you that five district buildings completed 2013 calendar year was zero employee accidents. And the buildings were the bus garage, Franklin Center, Jefferson Middle School, Plymouth Elementary, and Woodcraft Elementary. The Accident Investigation Review Committee presents achievement certificates and gift vouchers to the Safety Award winners on April 21st, first during their staff meetings. So, great job, and we want to keep those accidents as low as we can for our rates.
Congratulations to those buildings for working hard. All right, next up is Linda.
Yes, nice evening of warm fuzzies. Wanted to draw your attention to a couple of letters that were in your board packet. They were from the American Red Cross, and they were thank yous to the district and to Chartwell's Food Services for the support that we gave during the flood in April. As the floodwaters were rising, we received a call from emergency services saying that they anticipated the need for an emergency shelter, and we were able to offer Central Middle School. A year ago, we had been in a similar situation, and we ended up having Midland High because the entire district needed to be closed. But we were able to house some people at Central, no disruption anywhere in the district. Fortunately, Chartwell's main office is located there, and they just stepped in and offered some support, and both Red Cross, emergency services, and I believe the people there were, were very grateful to the support that the district did. So it's nice, the community supports us, but we're also in a position to be able to support the community. So do take a minute and read those letters that were in the packet.
Thank you. Moving on, we have a long list of actionable items tonight. The first one, do you want me to read the topic or...
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, the first one, item 4.7, is approval of the Midland County Educational Services Agency 2014-15 Budget, which is what we just heard presented tonight at our meeting.
I'd add that, we had the opportunity, as well as Linda and Bob Cooper were getting exposed, so Bob, Linda and I had a meeting today as well with the ESA. And so from what you saw, we went much deeper and reviewed those numbers and make sure Midland Public Schools is in the position it should be on their budget as well.
Excellent, well, thank you for taking the time to do that. All right, so this is not a resolution one, so this, I'm just looking for motion.
Move approval of agenda item 4.7 related to the Midland County ESA's 14-15 budget.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so moved by Dr. Kaminsky, supported by Ms. Baker.
So you do actually have a...
You do need to read it?
Linda, have you always read the full resolution on the budget? No, I didn't think so.
No, okay.
Yeah, roll call vote.
It's a roll call vote, though, okay, good. Before that, is there any discussion, though, before we move into that? All right, and Yvonne, if you could do a roll call vote.
All right. Vice President Branstad?
Yes.
Secretary Gordon?
Yes.
Treasurer Kaminsky?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member McFarland?
Yes.
Member Singer?
Yes.
All right, so it passes six to zero. Thank you. Next up is the approval of the summer tax rate, Linda.
Which does have to be read aloud, so I'll keep the details to a minimum. You must certify by June 1st, the tax rate that is to be levied in the summer of 2014 on the property of the school district, which is within the city of Midland. Just as a reminder, we took action back in November to notify the city that we would be doing this. be doing this, and by levying half of the taxes on the city property in the summer, we are able to levy roughly half of all of our local property taxes in the summer. The remaining half comes during the winter when we add the townships, and that provides, uh, some cash to the district during the summer when we go without a state aid payment during the month of September. So it allows us to smooth out our cash inflows and helps us avoid borrowing. And with that, uh, the secretary has a resolution to read that has all of the details.
Okay, this is for the certification of summer taxes for two thousand fourteen. Whereas this Board of Education was authorized by the electors of the Midland Public Schools on May third, two thousand five, to assess up to eighteen mils of the taxable valuation of the school district for ten years, two thousand six through two thousand fifteen, for the general operating fund, subject to the limitations of Article Nine, Section thirty-one of the Michigan Constitution of nineteen sixty-three as amended, and whereas, Section twelve eleven of the Revised School Code as amended, provides that the Board of Education of the school district may levy eighteen mils of the taxable valuation of non-homestead property within the school district for school operating purposes and exempts principal residence, qualified agricultural, qualified forest, industrial personal, and commercial personal property from such levy. And whereas, Section twelve eleven of the Revised School Code as amended further provides that if the foundation allowance of a school district calculated under Section twenty of the State School Aid Act for the nineteen ninety-four ninety-five state fiscal year was more than six thousand five hundred dollars per pupil, such school district may reduce the number of mils from which principal residence, qualified agricultural, qualified forest, industrial personal, and commercial personal property are exempted by up to the number of mils as certified by the Michigan Department of Treasury required for the school district's combined state and local revenue per membership pupil for the school fiscal year ending in nineteen ninety-five to equal a school district's foundation allowance for the state fiscal year ending in nineteen ninety-five, and may levy that number of mils in succeeding years for school operating purposes on principal residence, qualified agricultural, qualified forest, industrial personal, and commercial per- commercial personal property, subject to certain limitations. And whereas, the supplemental millage rate applicable to principal residence, qualified agricultural, qualified forest, industrial personal, and commercial personal property of the Midland Public Schools for the nineteen ninety-four ninety-five fiscal year was certified by the Michigan Department of Treasury as five point six five two three mils, and whereas, the Midland Public Schools has taken the action required by Section sixteen thirteen of the Revised School Code as amended to conduct a summer tax levy for two thousand fourteen and communicated such action to the city of Midland by letter dated November twelfth, two thousand thirteen. And whereas, Public Act thirty-eight of nineteen ninety-nine, being MCLA two eleven point three nine, requires that millage rate assessments be rounded down to four decimal places. Now therefore, be it resolved that there be spread on the two thousand fourteen summer tax roll a tax levy on the taxable value of non-homestead property of the school district within the city of Midland of nine mils for the general operating fund, and resolve further that there be spread on the two thousand fourteen summer tax roll a tax levy on the taxable value of principal residence, qualified agricultural, qualified forest, industrial personal, and commercial personal property of the school district within the city of Midland of zero point nine mil for the general operating fund, and resolve further that there be spread on the two thousand fourteen summer tax roll a tax levy on the taxable value of commercial personal property of the school district within the city of Midland of three mils for the general operating fund. And now therefore, be it resolved that if the revenues produced by the above levies for operating purposes result in revenues exceeding or falling short of the limits specified in Section twelve eleven of the Revised School Code as amended, such difference shall be made up in the school district's next regular tax levy in accordance with such section, and resolve further that the clerk of the city of Midland be and hereby is authorized and instructed on behalf of the Midland Public Schools to assess and spread the amounts and only those amounts required by the above mils on the two thousand fourteen summer tax roll.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
I missed something, can you read that again?
The quiz, now we will have a quiz.
This is the sixth paragraph, I think.
All right, thank you.
You are welcome.
I need a motion.
I motion for approval of, uh, action item four point eight for the summer tax rate.
Support.
Okay, move by Ms. Singer, support by Dr. Kaminsky. Is there any discussion?
Thank you to the taxpayers.
Yes, thank you.
As always, for supporting Midland Public Schools.
Now, does this require a roll call vote or a voice vote?
It, it's really a preference, you can do a voice vote.
We will do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, passes six to zero. All right, Linda, you are up next again.
Yes, it's been a busy spring, and we bid two of our major services, which sets us up quite nicely next year if having, uh, bids in place for major services remains a part of best practices. Uh, but it was time to do this anyway. Uh, the U.S. Department of Agriculture requires that all food service management contracts be rebid every five years, and it's a fairly lengthy detailed process that is very, very well-controlled by the Michigan Department of Education. And in fact, I was not permitted to bring this item to you tonight until they had approved of everything that we sent them and that they were able to sign off, that we had followed the appropriate process. Uh, but we do have their approval to bring this to you, so we issued a request for proposals earlier this spring, and only one company, Chartwell School Dining Services, chose to bid on our program. Uh, they have been our food service management provider since two thousand seven, and their estimated cost is two dollars and eighty-nine point one cents per meal. Uh, and as a couple of enhancements to our program, uh, they are offering a reimbursed, placement of some reimbursable vending machines in the high schools, and these allow students to receive the meals that qualify for the federal reimbursement, which is very important to the success of a food service program. Uh, and they will be able to get an entire reimbursable meal out of a vending machine. So for those students who don't want to stand in line, they'll be able to get it from there. And then we will have another option, uh, we are going to be the first Chartwell's district in the state to have our own food truck.
Hey.
Which will also be able to, uh, sell reimbursable meals or provide reimbursable meals, because these are part of the free and reduced lunch program, uh, as well as à la carte items, and we'll be able to use it, uh, you'll certainly put it in school parking lots, perhaps capture some of the business that, that comes flowing out of those parking lots, but also use it for fundraisers and various school events. It's just going to be a, you know, a neat little, uh, perk, I think, for, for our schools and our, our districts to have our own little trendy food truck that will provide that. So they're very excited to, to try that on us. They said, they thought we were, uh, you know, willing to be innovative and that we would find that interesting, so looking forward to that. Uh, so we do recommend to you that we approve the agreement with the Compass Group USA, which is through the Chartwell's Division. And after we've done that, we do have, need to have documents signed by the president of the board, which then gets sent back to the state of Michigan for the final approval. But this contract will go into place on July first.
All right, excellent. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of item four point nine, action item four point nine, the food service contract.
Second.
All right, so, move by Gordon, support by McFarland, is there any comments?
I'm excited to see what's on the food truck.
I am too. How are you going to decide which school to send it to? A rotating basis.
I think it'll travel back and forth.
Is this primary high school? Are we talking for food truck?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, and then the vending machines, will the benefit of that be that they'll be available twenty-four seven for kids who are in the building at different times?
They can be available, uh, yeah.
So if I'm staying after, for after-school practice, I can get a?
As a federal program, there are some limits as to what time various foods may be distributed. For example, breakfast foods can't be available after ten-thirty in the morning.
Really?
The rules regarding the federal food service program are, are pretty incredible, and in print, it's about this, this big. Uh, but yes, it will make food available at other times.
Is this a refrigerated vending machine?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So will there be hot food on the food truck?
Yes, yes, they, you know, looking at chicken tacos, food truck kinds of things, yes. Carnitas, and, and a lot of that will vary, uh, depending on, on what gets purchased.
Excellent.
But, uh, according to what their, their work, they've determined that, uh, foods from Latin regions will be very successful, so.
They'll put a big sombrero on the truck.
Yeah, how will the truck be decorated?
Yeah, yes, sadly, the rendering of it is pretty bland, so I, I hope they spiff it up a little.
All right, we will do a voice, voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, passes six to zero.
And I should have mentioned, uh, that Carol Laux, our business manager, was very instrumental in helping with the RFP. Uh, it, it is a huge endeavor involves providing a tremendous amount of data and, uh, a lot of detail work that needs to be done, and so she was very helpful. And then, uh, we also bid our custodial contract services, and I need to thank Mike Muggenberg for his assistance there, because he really worked with, uh, our, our past RFPs and also with those that some other districts had issued, and we had some input from our, our current custodial services provider on how perhaps to better communicate what our needs were. So we began contracting for custodial services in two thousand seven, the same time we began contracting for food services, and since our upcoming, or our current contract with Grand Rapids Building Services expires on June thirtieth, we decided to issue a complete request for a proposal earlier this spring. Uh, unlike food service, we had seven custodial services companies that submitted responses, and we had a district committee of members of the administrative and managerial staff review the proposals, then meet with representatives of three finalists, and then we toured other districts that are served by these finalists. So after careful evaluation, we bring to you a recommendation that superintendent be authorized to enter into a three-year contract within EnviroClean of Holland, Michigan, in the amount of one thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars, two hundred thirty-five thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty-eight cents per year, and that is roughly a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars less per year than we are currently paying. One million, I'm sorry, one million, two thirty-five, one seventy-one, and thirty-eight cents.
All right, do I have a motion on the custodial contract services contract?
Sure, I'll motion to, uh, have our superintendent, uh, enter into the three-year contract with EnviroClean of Holland, uh, item four point one zero for action. Support.
All right, motion by Singer, support by Gordon. Is there any discussion?
Did have a couple of questions. The, the people that are the custodial, um, workers now, are they going to stay retained? Because of that familiarity with the students and the buildings, and that'd be, that would be a pretty obvious question I'd get from the community, I think.
Yeah, in fact, I, I can jump in here because I probably have a little more up-to-date information. Uh, EnviroClean is going to be here on Thursday, hosting a meeting for the existing employees to talk about their opportunities to reapply with the new company. So.
Because I know that happened before with the switch before, when we privatized that, and I think most of the personnel, because I'm just thinking of the contact with the students and the building and, and such.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's part of the consideration, and we selected a company that was able to offer wages and benefits that we thought would be attractive to the existing employees rather than request, requiring that they take a pay cut. So we're, we're hoping that many of them will move to the new company.
And then looking at the, um, the references, surveying other buildings, that was satisfactory, other school districts were happy with?
Are there any local school districts, any near us that use this?
Uh, no, we will be the first in this area. Uh, they, EnviroClean serves a number of districts, it's based in Holland, as you would expect, quite a few on the western side of the state, and then they have, uh, a growing presence in southeastern Michigan, quite a few districts there, so we will be the first one in this region. Interestingly, our three finalists this time were exactly the same three finalists that we had in two thousand seven. And then they've all grown since that time.
Are we, I mean, what we bid was at the exact same services that we currently have?
Uh, no, on the advice of GRBS, we changed, uh, how we specified some of our services, particularly in regard to summer cleaning, uh, because after working with us for a number of years, they, they were very helpful on being able to say, here's what we have learned with working with you, that we believe you should make sure that you incorporate into your next RFP so that anyone working with you understands this is the way that you expect to have it done. So we, we did have some changes, uh, and the, the largest was how, summer staffing will now be maintained within the individual buildings rather than moved as a, a group of cleaners across the district. We worked with all the building managers on what they thought would best meet their needs.
Any more comments, questions? All right, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, passes six to zero. All right, it looks like we're back to you, Mike.
Yep, I'm recommending that the Midland City Educational Support Personnel Association contract be extended by one year. Uh, the one-year contract would have no changes from the current contract, and we'll carry them through the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year, expiring on September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Mr. Sharrow's recommendation regarding with the MSESPA contract.
All right.
Support.
All right, move by Mr. McFarland, support by Dr. Kaminsky. Is there any discussion on this? Can you tell us again who the Midland City Educational Support Personnel are?
Yep, go ahead.
Maintenance, okay.
Grounds and maintenance.
Grounds and maintenance. All right, for people who may not know. Any others? All right, we'll do another voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, passes six to zero. All right, who wants to take the next one?
I have another recommendation to, uh, for the board to approve the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year calendar that we recently ratified with a lot of agreement with the Midland City Education Association, and it basically is the same calendar that we had this year with legislative changes allowing us to, uh, continue that way for one more year.
All right, do I have a motion?
Move approval of item four twelve, um, the fourteen fifteen school year calendar.
All right.
Support.
Okay, move by Dr. Kaminsky, support by Ms. Singer. Is there any discussion?
Just a thank you for working on that. There's a lot of changes and requirements that go into instructional days, and we've got to count for snow days and everything else, and that remains to be seen, but just a lot of work on everybody's part administrative and teachers.
I was expecting to see more days this year when we talked about the PD days and how the state requirements, uh, had us not being able to count the PD days as instructional days, which makes absolute sense, but they did give us a year, uh, sabbatical on that, so we've got a little time.
Till the next change.
Till the next change, yes. Looks like a good calendar.
Yep, so I mean, I highlight again, it looks like Christmas break is once again two weeks, and spring break is March thirtieth through April sixth. I know there, those are two key dates, which I know were out there already because those are countywide, but just for the public to know. All right, any other comments?
Just curious, how, how would the calendar be available? That'll be posted on MPS website?
I think there was a date that says after Tuesday?
There'll be a number of people that are interested for planning family vacations, I'm sure, so. Yes.
Okay. I knew I read Tuesday, I don't know why I was thinking that was later than tomorrow. Um, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, six to zero. Calendar will be out tomorrow morning. Moving on, curriculum and instructions. I'm assuming you did not have a meeting since the last, so we will go on to, Bob, I guess you're still doing this.
Yep. Good evening, this is for information only, uh, bringing to you three textbooks, uh, for the twenty-eight day period of examination. Uh, there's one for health. There's one for healthcare technology, one, one for auto tech, one and two, and also car care. And then also there's one for AP, advanced chemistry. And as always, those books are available for review outside my office, curriculum and instructions.
Thank you. Moving on to finance. Dr. Kaminski, we met.
Yes, we met, and we have a short report to read, a lot of it we've covered already and action items for the agenda. But we met on April 21st, myself, Ms. Branstad, Mr. Wasserman, Mr. Sherrill, Linda Klein, Carol Lox, and Mr. Cooper met. Ms. Lox reviewed the March financial report. Ms. Klein stated the seven companies responded to the request for our proposal for custodial services. And one company submitted a response to the food service management proposal, a lot of which we covered, and action items took place already on this meeting. The committee discussed the format of the budget workshop to be held Monday, April 28th. At that time, we looked at the three scenarios presented by the School Aid Act proposals, which are the three scenarios of the governors, the House, and the Senate. In all three cases, the revenue would be less because of declining enrollment. The 14-15 budget will be presented at the June 9th Board of Education meeting with action taken on June 23rd. The next meeting is Monday, May 19th at 4:15 p.m. Short and sweet.
Thank you very much. Linda, do you want to go over the gifts?
Yes.
You have gifts, monetary gifts of $8,081.42.
Donors are the Dorothy O. Minical Business Education Endowment Fund at the Midland Area Community Foundation, supporting BPA and DECA trips to national events. Mr. and Mrs. James L. Fulkerson, supporting the forensics team at Jefferson. Seibert PTO, supporting kindergarten books. An anonymous donor for the summer reading program at Seibert. The HH Dow High School Athletic Booster Club, offering support to the pom-pom team, girls soccer and football coaches clinic. And the East Lawn Elementary Student Supplemental Education Endowment Fund at the Midland Area Community Foundation, providing support for a teacher book study. We also had the donation of three automatic external defibrillator alarm boxes, AEDs, given to Chestnut Hills, Seibert, and Plymouth by the Pulse 3 Foundation in partnership with Mobile Medical Response and the Saginaw Spirit.
Excellent, very nice.
So we thank all of our donors.
Thank you very much. All right, for action.
Yes, and this is perfectly timed with Mrs. Peritz's presentation this evening because she showed you a picture of some of the band uniforms. And as a result of that generous gift from the Herbert H. and Grace A. Dow Foundation for the two high school music uniforms, we have been in the process of ordering replacement marching band uniforms. You may remember, not too long ago, I brought you those for the Dow or the Midland High School uniforms. And it's now time for Dow High School. And as we needed to do with the Midland High uniforms, we did need to go with the original supplier. Ordinarily, a purchase of this size would be put out for a general bid. But we did bid, but had to meet these specifications exactly. So this purchase will be made from Standbury Uniforms, the supplier of the original uniform. And they are able to match everything perfectly to the uniforms that we purchased in the past. No other vendor is able to do that. So we seek your approval for, to issue a purchase order for $21,640 to Standbury Uniforms of Brookfield, Missouri.
All right, do I have a motion?
Move approval of item 6.4, the purchase order to repair the uniforms for $21,640.
Support.
All right, move by Dr. Kaminski, supported by Ms. Baker. Is there any discussion on this?
Just glad that we can, that we can do that.
Repair and not replace.
Yes, I was amazed by the presentation earlier of how much money in the short period of time that they have managed to raise to immediately update a lot of these uniforms. It's just wonderful support from the community on another program. All right, we will do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, passes six to zero. Moving on to human resources, it looks like there wasn't a meeting, so we will go to you, Carrie.
Okay. The board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the families of MPS retirees who have recently died. Rosemary Lowery, who passed away on April 14th. She was a teacher at Leapart. Anne Seibert for more than 24 years, retiring in 1986. Mae Pearson, who died May 1st. She was a secretary with Midland Public Schools for 21 years, retiring from Suggit School in 1981. Mary Jane Perkins, passed away April 29th. She was a human resources secretary for us for 20 years, retiring in 1980. And John Byron, who passed away on April 18th. He was an industrial arts teacher at Northeast Jefferson and Dow High for 20 years. He also coached football and wrestling at Northeast, and he retired in 1990. Now, our next moron is not for a retiree. As you well know, we lost one of the Midland Public School family this past 10 days. Mrs. Jennifer Grace Cisco was a much-loved, dedicated teacher in math department head at Midland High School, who lost her very courageous three-year battle with breast cancer on May 2nd. All in was the battle cry that was heard and felt through not only her Midland High School family, but through the MPS family, for all of us who cared for and supported Jen in her fight these past three years. And I see some of you have your pink shirts on with the "All In" slogan on it. We send our heartfelt thoughts and wishes to Jen's family, her husband Mike, her children Rachel, Blake, and Lauren, and her extended Cisco and Turner family. The wonderful light and spirit of Jennifer Grace Turner Cisco will live forever in our hearts at Midland Public Schools.
Thank you. Hard thoughts go out to all the families. All right, next up, correspondence to and from the Board of Education. You can read letters from the board to different individuals and also a list of our next, well, I guess the rest of the Board of Education meetings through the end of the year, which brings us to our study discussion session, hearing from board members. I'll start with you, Pam.
Great. First, I'd like to echo the sentiments for Jen Cisco. She was just a fabulous teacher and just a great member of the Midland High, the Midland Public Schools family. And it's really hard to see it end like this. But a lot of people gathered in support at Midland High for a memorial and at Memorial Presbyterian. It was neat to see the community really rally around her cause. So hearts go out to her and her family. Looking forward to the commencement coming up and our kids graduating. Also, there's been an art show over at Midland Center for the Arts where Midland and Dow students have a lot of different pieces of artwork on display. And if you haven't gotten a chance to get out there and check that out, it's a neat display. I thought it was neat tonight when we saw that there were seven bids for copy paper. And I thought, you know, when you're really trying to pinch pennies and save money wherever you can, you know, you've got to feel proud when you're going after even the copy paper and making sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck. So appreciate all the hard work that goes into looking at all the details. That's all I've got.
Oh, okay. Boy, what a long meeting tonight. This was, I thought it was a real treat, though, to have the kids come in and perform for us. And maybe for members of the community who aren't so engaged in the school, I would encourage them to come to our meetings because they are getting increasingly interesting with the different performances and presentations. And it really, I think, gives everybody a good flavor for what goes on, you know, in our district. Congratulations again to our shining stars, you know, just everybody who has donated to make all the great things possible and the things that we're able to achieve. Beyond that, you covered a number of the things that I had in mind to talk about, so with that, I will pass comment.
Well, I agree with you. I think these presentations here, I always really look forward to them. And I just, I learn so much, and they're just so exciting to see all the really exciting things that happen in the Midland Public Schools. I really enjoyed the musical presentations tonight, and I've always been amazed at how much music Mrs. Peritz and Mrs. Murray and Mr. Stevens get out of our kids. It's just amazing to me. And also, I want to mention that Mr. Stevens was a Gerstacker Award winner last week, so congratulations to him. And I think I'll cut it off there.
Lynn?
All right. Well, I congratulate the Gerstacker Award winners as well. And I'd like to thank Yvonne. She did a wonderful job in her seat. She did a great job in recognizing, helping recognize our four winners and our shining stars tonight as well. Just shows what great staff we have and how much people appreciate them and like to recognize them. Pam mentioned the Midland Center for the Arts Art Show. I stopped over there, but I'd like to thank them too for hosting so many of our schools. The Frog exhibit was going on. And even when I went over the other day, there was a Midland Public School bus there. There were buses from other places. And that takes a lot of volunteers and time on their part, so we appreciate their partnership with us in doing that. Went to see Dow High's musical Xanadu the other night, so congratulations to them. Once again, great performances, so much talent from those students and a lot of hard work from all the people that are involved with those great productions. And the robotics went to the world championship, so just lots of different groups doing just fantastic things, representing Midland Public Schools. And today, we visited the Building Trades House with the Curriculum Committee. And that is always so much fun to see what our students are building. Those houses are absolutely beautiful. And there is going to be an open house to the public on Saturday, the Saturday, the 17th, from 10 to 2. And it is at 1128 East Haley Street, which is right next door to the Habitat for Humanity Restore. So I'd encourage anybody that can to stop by there and see the wonderful homes that they have built. And then lastly, my heart as well goes out to the Jennifer Cisco's family. But I'd like to thank Midland High and all involved for the beautiful memorial service. They estimate about 1,000 people were there, and it was very touching, very heartfelt. And it was, I know, hard for them to have to do that with their emotions being worn on their sleeves, but it was absolutely wonderful, and I thank them for taking all the time to do that.
Okay, it's hard to follow up. But, you know, I agree with you all. The meeting was full of a lot of good things that are going on in the district and really showcasing the talent of our teachers, our students, and what's going on with the performances, music program, and so forth. Thanks for those, again, who worked on the calendar. It's nice collaboration to get that done. And it is challenging to try to hit a moving target on that. And then I missed Gerstacker Awards, but one thing I remembered going through that process last year is that a lot of the teachers, a lot of the winners, had become mentors for others. And that's just a way to mentor along and to grow and inspire teachers to go to the next level. And I remember that was just a key component of the Gerstacker Awards. And thanks to the Gerstackers for supporting and continuing that tradition. Also, I'm thinking of Jen wearing the shirt tonight. And the support that came out really spoke volumes to the lives that she touched and how she made, just one person, how they can make such a difference in MPS. I was very impressed. And then I think Teacher Appreciation Week passed last week. And just if you had a chance to thank a teacher, you still, still has time to do that, even though it is last week. And then the Safety Awards, it's nice to have that element brought up by the superintendent, you know, just that you think about kids safe on school buses, in and out of buildings, parking lots are busy. And think about our employees, and it really is an important part. So I'll hand it over to our president for tonight.
You guys have covered a lot, but once again, congratulations to the two shining stars tonight. Those are wonderful presentations. Congratulations to the Gerstacker Award winners. I love the presentations from Plymouth and Chestnut Hill. It's wonderful to highlight those. I noticed we had accepted some money, and there was something in your Monday letter today about the DECA group at Dow High and the BPA group at Midland High going on to these national competitions and just how fabulous that is. We have a couple of friends who got to go this year on those. And it's just so great to see these kids going out and representing our school district and representing it very well at these national and, I believe, international competitions. I know AP exams are going on last week and this week, so this is going to be my shout-out to a teacher. I'm sure they're all doing this, but my son is taking a couple this week. And the teachers go above and beyond to help prepare these children to take these exams. They don't just expect, I mean, my son has been going to review sessions after school on weekends. And it's just, I really appreciate the teachers going above and beyond. They don't have to do that, and they just do because they really care about their students and want them to do well on these exams. Lastly, I know prom is this weekend, so hopefully everyone enjoys themselves and behaves themselves.
I'll second that.
And on to you, Mike.
The Gerstacker Awards have been mentioned many times tonight. Let's talk, actually announce the winners. So we had Jeff Beckwith, from sixth grade teacher at Jefferson, you know, Mary Ann Lipaski, Adam's fifth grade teacher, Roger Stevens, MPS music teacher, and Lynn Tofa, Woodcrest kindergarten teacher. We also had 25 retirees, many of them we recognized that evening, with a total of 641 combined years of service in public education. So that was pretty impressive and will be missed dearly. Our office professional administrative assistants have sent us what they call their salary request, and they're not asking for no salary requests this year because of the economic conditions of the district. But they do want to be considered if the economic situation turns around. They haven't had any increases since the '06-'07 school year.
So that's a no-salary increase request, not a no-salary request.
Correct, excuse me. Good, good correction.
Just thought I would clarify that for them.
They would appreciate that, I'm sure. Teaching staff assignments for the 2014-15 school year are released on May 23rd, so beware of that. And our ongoing facility studies progress, French associates have been in looking at our closed facilities at this point and beginning to study those. They have requested that we move on and put our RFP out for our contract manager. They want the assistance on the contract manager, and they're estimating for the projects and those costs. And so that is out and due May 23rd. So we'll have a FF home meeting to schedule real quick here in order to review those and hopefully bring this construction manager for approval at our first June meeting. Lynn has also been in contact with Starter birth, our financial consultants, because we have to begin to look at the financial side of that as well and working some numbers up on that side. U.S. News and World Report has recognized our high schools again, third time, third year in a row, both as silver medal winners. Some stats to help you put that in significance is that our high schools are in the top 7% in the state. But maybe more impressively, they're in the top 10% of high schools in the entire country. And those are basically built on IB and AP participation as well as results. We have a structural issue at Northwest or Northeast Middle School. We had in 2006 some storage buildings built on the second floor. One of them may not have had the proper trusses structure underneath. And so we're in the process of having that analyzed and look back at our, work back with our architect at that time on what we may do and try to recover any cost through that piece of it. Obviously, that area has been vacated as we do that, so. School aid budget and May revenue consensus numbers are coming out soon. And so you've been seeing a lancing that the House and Senate moved their budgets forward. But you may also need to know that the thought is, the numbers look like that the May revenue consensus, the numbers may be down. So we haven't seen that in a little while. Numbers have been increasing. And that's yet to be seen how much that'll affect the final school aid budget as we go forward. We'll end with that one, budget numbers.
Thank you. Is there anything else? All right, so 9:11, we will adjourn. Thank you.